I would like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, January 11th, 2021 at 5:30 PM. Due to the public health concerns, this meeting will be accessible by phone by dialing 253-215-8782 or entering the meeting ID number 98564320175 or zoom at I do that so that people, if they're on their phone or if they're zooming, they can go back from one to the other. Comments are only allowed during designated portions of this meeting. To speak during the meeting for public comment, please, please press the raised hand button near the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine on your phone. I will repeat this also when we get to some of this, when we get to the council agenda. Please refrain from raising your hand until the mayor has announced that he has opened the public comment portion of the meeting. Your name or the last four digits of your phone number will be called out when it's your turn to speak. When using your phone to call in, you may need to press star six to unmute yourself. All speakers will have up to three minutes to speak. These instructions are on our city's website for this council meeting. Instead of speaking live, you may have been able to submit comments prior to 3:00 PM, providing it to our city clerk. With that, I'd like to call to order. Please say aye or something like that after I call your name. Councilmember Eversole.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Fannich.
Here.
Councilmember Heims.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
And this is Mayor Keon. We also have from staff, City Administrator Bob Larson.
Here.
Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen.
Here.
Chief Kelly Bucy.
I'm here.
Thank you. And we have, we're having some technical problems. We don't have any speakers except for the ones that are coming out of the laptop. And so if you make sure that you're not too quiet, everyone, please. Finance Director Dave Rodenbach.
I'm here.
Thank you. Human Resource Director Camille Borders. Okay. Information Technology Director Keith Smith. Okay. Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Here.
Okay. Tourism Communications Director Laura Padet.
Here.
Thank you. And Building Official Paul Rice.
Here.
And City Clerk Molly Townsley.
Here.
Assistant City Clerk Josh Decker.
Here.
And we have our Attorney Daniel Kenny.
Here.
Great. Anyone that I haven't called on? Oh yeah. Court Administrator Stacy Colberg.
Here.
Thank you. Anyone else that I have not called on, please state your name. Great. Thank you. And please join us silently for the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, welcome everyone and welcome citizens. This is our first meeting of 2021. So may we have a good year and maybe get out of this epidemic as soon as possible so that we can all see each other in person. So I hope everyone had a great holiday. And with that, are there any changes to the agenda by council? Okay, council, the agenda stands. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Those abstaining? Most consent agenda passes. Tonight, our presentation will be on city forms of government. Michael Wilson is here to give the presentation. He's a retired city manager, city administrator, probably of other cities as well as from Gig Harbor and a former board member of AWC and MRSC. And with that, I'd like to present Michael.
Well, thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I do appreciate the invitation to join the city council in discussion regarding the form of government, the council manager form of government. This is going to be a challenge because of all the, all the people on the screen. So we'll, we'll do our best. And my intent is to not be redundant from what MRSC and Andy Knight has presented. I did coordinate with them. As a matter of fact, I recommended initially when I heard about this to invite them to give a presentation. So I appreciate your outreach to me to, to join you. And we'll go over some things that perhaps weren't covered by MRSC and Andy Knight. And keep within the time constraints that you have. So I'm, I've got my clock up here, so I'll do my best. Just as a quick introduction, I've been, I've worked in city and county and state government for over 35 years. Also utility district during my retirement years. And during my, my tenure as Peter Focus, being a city administrator and city manager, I worked for 12 mayors during my career as both a city manager and city administrator, a city administrator in Gig Harbor and Sumner, and also C-TAC and Sammamish, the city manager, county administrator, a couple of counties, two-year career. But I worked for three mayors during my seven years at Gig Harbor. I worked for Mayor Ruth Bog, Don McCarty and Gretchen Wilbert. So I think the, the fact that I worked in a council mayor, strong mayor form of government in Gig Harbor and working for three different mayors there, maybe will provide a little bit of insight and to what I'm going to be presenting and also hopefully will be helpful when you have questions of me. I'm going to keep this very informal. I don't have a PowerPoint. I don't think you need to see a PowerPoint. And what I wanted to do, first of all, is just start off to talk about the form of government. It's, it's a little confusing as far as how many cities, from a comparison standpoint, to be able to, to judge the number of cities that have the council manager form versus the strong mayor form. If you look at the, the national statistics is presented by ICMA is that they, they identify, there's 11,000 cities in the United States that are over a population of 2,500. And that's important to distinguish because there's a lot of small towns and villages. And of the 11,000, the council manager form of government is the, is, is at 40% of those 11,000 cities. And the, the strong mayor form of government, it's 38%. Compared to Washington State, Washington State, we have 281 cities in our state. But there are, there's 153 of those cities out of the 281 that are actually over the 2,500. And I think what's, that's important to know because there's so many small cities and, and towns that are part of that 281. So if you're comparing Washington State with the, with the national average, is that about 35% of our cities that are over 2,500 operate under a council manager? So it's a little bit below the national average. I think one thing that is, is an important statistic is that I've been involved with some of the newer cities that have been formed over the, over the years. And in 1990 is when there was an influx in the number of cities that incorporated C-TAC, Woodinville, Federal Way, Sammamish, others. And of the 12 cities that incorporated since 1990, these are the 12 newest cities in our state, all 12 of them incorporated under the council manager form of government. There's one city out of the 12 federal way that did change a few years ago to a strong mayor form. And I think some of the distinctions is that the large, many of the larger cities and obviously the small towns are managed by, majority of them are managed by mayors. The mayor serves as the CEO. Whereas the cities that are council manager forms tend to fit in the, in the smaller population level, smaller to medium size. And the, the situation with, with Gig Harbor is, if you look at the population is Gig Harbor is, is at 80, 81 of the 250, excuse me, of the 289 cities, Gig Harbor actually sits at 81 from a population standpoint. So, so Gig Harbor in the big scheme of things is not necessarily that small, but kind of fits in that category. The, the one thing that, that I wanted to talk about that seems to be a little bit, I shouldn't say confusing, but I think it's important to know as a, as both a city manager and city administrator is that I always tell people is that city managers or city and city administrators really don't have power, but they have responsibility. And I think that's an important distinction is that really the power from a governing standpoint rests with the, the council and the mayor. And the city manager and city administrator have delegated or prescribed responsibilities. And I think the big distinction between a city administrator and, and city administrator, Larson can certainly affirm this, is that I think the biggest distinction between the two is over personnel is that I served with, as I mentioned, with three different mayors in Gig Harbor. And even though all the cities that I managed as city administrator, I was responsible for hiring and firing staff. That actually was an issue that came up every time a new mayor came on board. An example is that for one year during my tenure with, working with Don McCarty is that Don chose to change my job responsibilities where he, for the, for the first year he handled personnel and then shifted those responsibilities back to me for the last three years of his tenure. So even though the responsibilities of managing and hiring and firing personnel may be in the job description, anytime a mayor comes on board, that can change. And that's happened to me many times. And that's also kind of one of the fun things and challenging things about, about being a city administrator is, is with different mayors, you, you need to learn and to work with them and see where, where, where they want to go with respect to personnel management. But I think, I think the issue with respect to personnel management is the, probably the biggest challenge that a city administrator has versus in a council manager form of government, personnel, hiring and firing staff is, is prescribed under the statutes. And it's very clear as to what the role responsibilities are. So I would say that, that that would fit at the top of my, my list of challenges and responsibilities when you look at the distinction between the city manager, the council manager form of government and the, the strong mayor form of government. It's over, it's really over the personnel. That is a, a, a big challenge that, that one has as administrator. Communication obviously is another and partnering with the council and the community. And of course, you know, just basically working and creating a, you know, fun working environment. The, I'd say that, excuse me. The, the one issue that I wanted to really focus on with respect to the role and responsibilities is, and this is a big challenge is over the way that administrator manager deals with the hiring and firing of staff, dealing with the ICMA Code of Ethics. And I think that that's one of the big challenges that, that exists within the profession is being able to make sure as a professional administrator, professional city manager, that it's really clear that you have responsibilities for managing the staff, but also dealing with the potential termination of staff. And the, I think the challenge that, that I face with the role of being a city manager and city administrator is dealing with having clear concise responsibilities between the role of supervising, dealing with discipline, dealing with the personnel policies, making sure that you're doing things in compliance with your statutes, but primarily making sure that you're doing things and making decisions based on merit. And so I think that's kind of one of the challenges that you have. The, the ICMA Code of Ethics is extremely important when you look at the qualifications of a city manager. You look at even the qualification, whether it's a city manager, city administrator, I know I'm kind of going back and forth, but irrespective of the city manager, city administrator having decisions that are based, based on merit, that's one of the basic principles of the ICMA Code of Ethics. And it is extremely important when it comes to dealing with personnel and dealing with, with staff discipline and terminations. And I would say of all my, my jobs that I've had in city management, it, personnel by far is the most challenging and, and quite frankly, rewarding aspects of the job to make sure that you can take and deal with the employees in a, in a professional manner, in respectful manner, and also just deal with the issues and make decisions again based on merit. I'm glad early on, I became a member of ICMA back in 1981. That's probably the best thing, best training I, I got is starting off with that organization and just the ongoing training to make sure that what you're doing is doing, is operating in the best interest of the city and the community and, and doing your job in a concise way. And I think it's, it's easier for, I'd say for me as a, as a city manager, dealing with the personnel issues. But on the other side, in a strong mayor form of government, it's, it's been fun for me dealing with the challenges of having different mayors over the years and being able to work with them in partnership. But like I said, with the exception of one year, I've always had the responsibility for hiring and firing staff. And it's real easy for, I think, me and the rest of the staff and employees to understand what the expectations are and who is responsible for dealing with, you know, with the personnel matters of the city.
Mr. Wilson, we have a question from a council member, council member Fannich.
You bet.
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Wilson, you are using the term city manager administrator. So I just want to make sure that when you're using those two terms in the same sentence, are you referring to the city manager as the administrator? Or are you making the distinction that I think you should be that city manager is one thing, city administrator is another?
Yeah. Yeah. And maybe I can clarify a bit. I, with respect to personnel, what I was trying to do is, is make the distinction between the two, the city manager versus the city administrator in a strong mayor form of government is that the role of the city administrator in dealing with personnel issues tends to be more of a partnership with, with the mayor. There, there'll be mayors that I, for even though I've been responsible for hiring and firing staff, I will run, I will coordinate and deal with whatever level of involvement the mayor wants to have. Even, even though in a strong mayor form of government, many of the mayors that I worked for delegated the responsibility for hiring and firing, they still wanted to play some role in it. So there, there is, it's, it's an ongoing challenge as an administrator. As you stayed, if you stayed in a city where there's been a change in mayors over the years, as I have, you're, you're going to be challenged with whoever that mayor is because they're going to want to have some involvement in personnel. So I think the distinction is that the city manager's role is very black and white, very clear. City administrator in a strong mayor form of government, it can be, it can change overnight. And I think that's, I think that's the challenging part that you have as, as an administrator and as staff.
Generally speaking, generally speaking, you are, when you're, use the term administrator, you're referring to a city administrator.
City administrator.
Okay. Okay. I am, but as a city manager, you have, you have seven council members that are directing you too. And, you know, MRSC had pointed out that the turnover of city managers, when it's a council form of government can be, is averages every four years, can be as short as two years. So that's, that's a lot of change, friction and rebuilding. And so the council is telling you as a manager, am I not correct? They can be dictating to you about staff as well, can they not?
You know, you know, that is an excellent question because inevitably there are going to be council members that you have that want to get involved in personnel. And, and, and I've had that happen on many occasions. But you're able to sit down and work with them because they know that it's not their responsibility to hire and fire or be involved in personnel. But you cannot, as a city manager, you cannot, I think, from an effective standpoint and is, and being able to have a trusting relationship with the council, have a black and white boundary as far as listening to them or having them have your ear on some issues that they may have with a particular staff member. But yeah, you can, but when it comes down to hiring and firing, it is your decision. And sometimes you may, you may make it as, you may determine that, well, gee, I want to have this city council member sit in on a selection committee. That, that, that may happen. But with respect to the longevity of city managers is that I think it's all over the place. There, there are city administrators that leave after a new mayor comes on board. They're, I, I don't know statistically of what the longevity is of a city manager versus a city administrator, but I've had city manager friends that have worked in cities for 20, 30 years. Dick Zace is the city manager of Yakima for nearly 30 years. So it, it, it's really all over the place. And also there are managers that maybe with a smaller city that decide, gee, they want to move on to something different or larger. So there may be a lot of reasons for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Fannich. I'm sorry, councilmember Wu.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for being here tonight. In, in three years, the city of Gig Harbor is on our third city administrator. 45% of our employees have left working for the city. And we have another 33% of employees say they're planning to leave within two to three years. What is the responsibility or how, what is the training that's needed for a city manager as opposed to a strong mayor form of government?
I'd like to correct that, though. We have had two city administrators. We, we've had two. And we also, when I came on board, 25% of our staff were going to retire within two to five years.
So we had Mr. Ron Williams was the city administrator when you came on board. I believe you let him go. We had.
No, I ran, I ran saying I was not going to have him be our city administrator.
So we had Mr. Ferris and now we have wonderful Bob Larson.
We have two.
So that would be three. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Okay. The, I think the challenge that, that any city administrator has working in a strong mayor form of government, when there is a transition. And I've, I've, I've had some of my most enjoyable experiences working with, with mayors in strong mayor forms of government where I may have been, there's one city where in Sumner I was hired not long after the new mayor came on board and a lot of people have been, been relieved of their jobs. And it was a very divisive situation and it, it took a long time. But we were able to work in a, in a collaborative manner. So it's the, it's really the, I think the number one job of, of a new administrator is to be able to work with the council, with the mayor, and to be able to make sure everybody's on the same page. And, and everybody has to operate in the same ground rules or operating norms so that you can either operate in chaos, you're going to operate under some sense of organization. And you have to have some basic parameters. And being able to work with, to find out what areas that you can help improve in communication, improve in dealing with personnel. And, and, and there's a lot of, lot of training that goes on. And I, I'll tell you, and I'm not going to get me internal fears into Gig Harbor, but I, I do want to share a story with you because I'm not sure if anybody remembers Don McCarty or Ruth Bog. Ruth Bog was my first mayor and loved really working with her. Don McCarty, first six months of my tenure with Don, this, the police chief resigned. And Don and I sat down together and, and Don basically removed, wanted to remove the responsibilities for hiring and firing from me, which he had the right to do. And after a year of it being challenging and difficult, he gave those responsibilities back to me. And each year that he was there, I got better and better performance evaluations. And the last evaluation I got, he said, Mike, thank you. It took you four years to train me. And, and Don was, Don McCarty was a manager of a utility district. And I enjoyed working with Don, but it was a challenge. I enjoyed the challenge, however. But we just have to sort out, you know, who wants to do what and what are the responsibilities? And being able to understand who best can handle the job. I've had other, other mayors that wanted to have certain involvement with, Barbara Skinner was one of my mayors in Sumner and she wanted to have involvement in personnel. But it took about six months for us to be on the same page. And so that's, that's just one of the normal challenges you have when a new mayor comes on board in a strong mayor form of government. in a strong mayor form of government. And if you are, if the mayor wants to keep you on board as the, as the existing city administrator, then you have to find and work together in a collaborative manner and have, you have to have good communications and above all, make sure the staff is comfortable with what's going on and understands what's going on. So it is one of the challenges, but it's also one of the things that makes the job enjoyable for me. It has been for me is, is to see that turnaround and see that, see those things improve.
Thank you. Questions from council? Okay, we had M R C answer about an hour worth of questions. So council member Woo.
Yes, can you go, can you elaborate a little bit on the qualifications needed for a city manager?
Sure, yes. Generally, the requirements are is that the city manager has an undergraduate degree in political science, public administration, business administration, finance, economics, those are some of the degrees that you would expect the city manager to have. Second is generally a master's degree in public administration or government is required by lots of cities. I haven't have a doctorate degree in law. The, but the other, and I think is, is equally important is the credentials is after one becomes a city manager, what sort of training do they have? With ICMA, we have, and I think it's an exceptionally amazing organization where I don't think there's a day that's gone by during my career where there wasn't something new that I learned from something. And I learned so much from my colleagues through the training I got through ICMA. And then I went, I eventually went on to be, become a credential manager, which basically means, it's kind of like an attorney is that they have to, you have to have continuing education. And so some cities may require you to become, be a credential manager. But I think for the most part is having that undergraduate and graduate degree. And then, you know, minimum experience, you know, eight to 10 years as a manager. If, if, if you're looking at a larger city. So I think the qualifications are extremely important and someone who's got strong city manager or city administrator experience is, and also I think great references. I, I, I can't underscore the importance of having someone who has has a strong background and do a very, very good background check.
Thank you. Council member Farnes.
Yes, are there city administrators that are members of the ICMA?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the ICMA had about 8,600 managers from around the world. I, I, I joined ICMA 1981 when I was county administrator of Plowton County. And I, I did not become a city manager until in 2000. So I, excuse me, in 1993 as, as city manager, interim city manager for CTAC. But yes, I'd say that at least half the managers at ICMA are city administrators or they may even be department heads or assistant city administrators or managers.
And would you also say that most city administrators have some of the same credentials that city managers have? As far as education?
Yes, yes. I think that, I don't think there's really a distinction between the the credentials between a city administrator or city manager. I, I think the, I think the really the important thing is that they have sound experience. They, they've, they've done the job for a number of years. Being a member of ICMA, and I'll tell you the reason that this is important, and Bob can amplify this, is the reason that being a member of ICMA is so important, and it's gotten me out of, out of trouble on a few occasions, is the ICMA Code of Ethics. The ICMA Code of Ethics is, is our Bible essentially, is that it, we stay out of politics, we are responsible for not being involved in elections at the local level. As a matter of fact, I don't, I'm not involved in any elections. As a matter of fact, my wife, who worked for Penice School District for 31 years, worked for the school board and the superintendent, she was also restricted from being involved because of the image of being married to me and just staying out of elections, staying out of the politics. And the other is, is the decisions that we make, is that decisions are based on merit. It's one of the most important principles of our Code of Ethics. And it's, I think, extremely important that whoever is hired as a manager is a member and follows those codes, that Code of Ethics. I can't underscore that enough.
Thank you. Council member Heims.
Ah, yes. In the city manager, what I call the, the gray zone between policy and day-to-day operations. I keep reading about policy and day-to-day operations. And when I look at most of the things that we're involved in, it's some gray area in between. For example, we depend on staff for developing ordinances, studies, all kinds of stuff to support our legislative efforts. And and we just love to talk directly with those people. In the city manager form of government, do you have a contact with council that is your prime input source? Or do you truly report to seven people?
I, I absolutely report to seven people. And, and one, and one thing that I want to make real clear too is that the, the the relationship between the council and the manager has to be a partnership. And over the years, we worked on ground rules and operating procedures and so forth. But basically, what I call them is operating norms. This is how we all going to function. And and one of the principles that I've always followed with, with my council and mayor is I let the council members talk to whomever they want at any time with staff members. But there are two rules. They couldn't occupy a great deal of their time and they couldn't tell them what to do. And those two principles worked extremely well. And during my 35 years, I only had one council member who I actually personally had to pull aside and sit down and talk to him because he sat in the police chief's office way too much. And the staff's response to if there's a council member that does occupy too much of their time or asks them to do something, they said, you know, I got to run that by Mike. And so they know how to respond to a council member who's, you know, maybe telling them how to do certain things. So having certain parameters and how you all function together is extremely important. And it goes beyond just having the council rules on meetings or how you operate your meetings, but how council members deal with the press, how they deal with staff members, how they deal with the community. What, you know, it, it's important that everybody's on the same page. So my communication is with, with all council members because every council member has something important to contribute and wants to contribute, and I want to hear from them. And, you know, I really never had a problem with, you know, you know, after being with the city for a while and taking some time to get to know council members and being introduced to them, the amount of time I would spend with them would, would kind of slow down a lot because they know me. We had, we have, we have a lot of council meetings, a lot of work sessions. So it didn't really require them to outreach to me because they knew that they had the flexibility of being able to talk to staff. And under those basic two ground rules, worked extremely well.
Hey, council member Rodenberg.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Wilson, for being here. I have a question about you reporting or a city manager reporting to seven people. If the city manager works at the direction of council, wouldn't they be working at the direction of a consensus? I mean, if there's, if the council decides that this is the direction we want to go to, then shouldn't it be one directive, not seven?
You know, I'll tell you, it varies, it varies from city manager and council to city manager council. There is not one, one right way or one wrong way. Is that it depends on the makeup of the council and who your manager is. And I'll give you an example is the preparation of the council agenda. This was a very divisive issue in Sumner when I came on board because the mayor and the city council were extremely divisive. And the council pulled away from the mayor, the responsible for preparing the agenda. And we eventually were able to work that out, work out procedures and rules. And we were able to actually, it took about a year or so after I came on board to be able to function together. Well, the preparation under a, a council manager form of government, the preparation of the agenda is a, is a big issue. And it can vary as to, from city to city, as to how you prepare. The bottom line is you all have to be on the same page. The council may decide, okay, that's the job that we want our, our city manager's staff to do. Or they may decide, gee, we want the mayor, we want our, the mayor who is appointed by the council to be our representative. Or they may have a committee. There's a lot of different ways you can do it. And, and, and one way not, isn't necessarily better than the other. It's what works for you.
Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. We appreciate the time that you took and the knowledge that you have. So thank you.
Anytime. Thank you. And I appreciate patient and anything more that we can do to help, call anytime.
Great. Yeah, council member Woo, final comment?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for being here. And, you know, to continue this conversation, which is important and for our community, if this is the appropriate location, place in the agenda, I would like to request that the city prepare a resolution to bring back to us at the next council meeting, putting council manager form of government on the April 27th special election.
Actually, you did, we asked if you wanted point, yeah, point of order?
I, I do not believe that under a presentation, this would be the appropriate time to make that kind of motion. I think that that would be something more akin to happen at a council comments.
Thank you. I'll be happy to do that then.
I might add, we already asked at the beginning if there was a change to the agenda. And I would believe when we go to council comments that in the, in transparency, first thing, it took nine months just to think about changing the park name. And so changing the form of government under a Zoom without being transparent to the public, I think, is a very dangerous thing to go if you really want to involve the public, unless you have a power, a power, you know, you want to, you know, I just don't, I really don't think under, under a crisis and epidemic, changing the form of government without letting the government be involved is, is a very.
Point of order, Mayor. I don't, I don't believe your comments are appropriate at this time either.
Thank you. I will refrain from that. Okay, so thank you, Mr. Wilson. With that, we will go on to the mayor's report. Actually, there was a, there was an M R C presentation for the public. I'm letting you know about that. M R C governs different cities, and that was a presentation that was made to council last Thursday on the 7th of January at 3:00 PM. And you can hear about that at our city's website under past recordings. They did say that actually 71%, 71% of cities in Washington, our size, have our form of government. And with that, the city administrators' report. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. I have my mic turned on. I do not have a report this evening. Thank you.
Sure. Now there is a public comment on non-agenda items. And there were some comments on the, on this. Is that on the agenda or off the agenda? So we let people know. If, if anyone wanted to speak on different forms of government, is that.
Yes, there, this is city administrator. This would be entertained during this time if there's any, any comments on the former government presentation, I would suggest, recommend you take them during this portion of the agenda.
Okay, and just so the public realizes, what you, what you do is you, you, to speak during this meeting or during the public comment time, which would be now, there are some to read, you press the raise hand button near the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine on your phone. And let's see, use your phone to call in. Sometimes you need to press six to unmute yourself. And then you have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor, this is the city administrator. Will you have three right now that were submitted prior to 3:00 PM? Would you like me to read those now? Or would you like to have the live comments now?
Let's do the live comments first.
All right.
Thank you. Yes, Jeff Katkey. You're unmuted.
Thank you for, for giving me the opportunity to give some thoughts on this.
Yeah, if you could state your address too, please.
Yes, Jeff Katkey, 7521 Soundview Drive, Northwest, Gig Harbor, Washington, 98335. Lived there since 2004. And thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council and citizens for allowing me a chance to speak. I believe that strong mayor form of government is better for a number of reasons. Reason one, in the council manager form of government, the citizens are deprived of their right to choose who will be the leader of the city's staff and business. Taking the power away from the people and giving it to the council is not in the citizen's best interest. The mayor is elected by the citizens, as is the council. Both the mayor and the council need to respect the people's voice in the form of their votes, even at a time that they don't agree with one another. Reason two, having a strong mayor along with a, a strong city council, as Gig Harbor currently does, acts as a form of checks and balances that helps assure that neither the city council nor the mayor's authority is out of balance. The city council acts as a check and balance for the mayor. The mayor acts as a check and balance for the city council. This protects against abuses of power and conflicts of interest. Conflicts of interest are inherent in local government. Both city council and mayor are paid, are not paid a, we call living wage. Therefore, they are, they may be employed outside of the government. Because of this, leaders of local government may have business interests that create conflict of interest when representing the citizens. A governmental system of checks and balances has been used since the founding of our country to prevent any one branch of government from abusing its power to the peril of its citizens. This is good policy and we should maintain it in Gig Harbor through the separation of powers between the mayor and the city council. Reason three, the council manager of government is a form of management by committee. Management by committee is one of the most difficult, inefficient and expensive forms of management ever invented. Imagine the challenges if you're a city manager and had seven council members with different skills, different opinions and different experience as your boss, giving you advice. Management by committee would be very difficult for a city manager. As the M R C presentation pointed out, 71% of the cities of similar size in Washington to Gig Harbor governed with a strong mayor form of government. Furthermore, they pointed out in the last 50 years, only 17% of cities in Washington have changed their government. I believe changing Gig Harbor's form of government is unnecessary, especially during this pandemic. I think it would be expensive and I think it will temporarily undermine the effectiveness of the management of the city staff. Reason four, it's better for city employees to report to one person, one leader, not a council. The great management expert W. Edwards Deming had a rule. The great management expert W. Edwards Deming had a rule he often quoted. It is more if it is more than one person's job, it's nobody's job. He advocated for putting one person in charge of and responsible for an organization to achieve maximum quality, service, efficiency, and cost savings. I believe the city council already carries a heavy load and should not be given more responsibility like the day-to-day management of the city staff. The council's job is already demanding in terms of time, energy, and responsibility. Adding more work to the council could stretch them too thin, undermine effective leadership and management of the city staff. This would reduce service to citizens. Therefore, in summary, I believe the system of checks and balances of a strong mayor and city council form of government is good for the citizens. I believe the citizens should choose who the city's leader is. I believe management by committee is a bad idea. And I urge the city council to discharge this idea of changing the government at this time. But if you if it is going to move forward, it really should be brought for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that's on the phone or on a computer that wishes to speak? Bobby, you're unmuted now, and please state your name and address.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Robert Sultus, 4819 Old Stump Drive, Gig Harbor, 98332. I had some written comments, but I'd like to read them if I may, Mayor, because it's more efficient that way since I kind of missed the deadline for 3:00. As the city grows rapidly, the problems become more complex. And the city must evolve into an organization more capable of keeping up with those changes and managing an increasingly difficult set of challenges. We need a council elected by the citizens to set policy, set top-level priorities, approve budgets, and ensure the city is well-run. We need a professional manager appointed by the council at the helm with the autonomy autonomy to implement council decisions and manage the day-to-day operations of the city, including senior staffing decisions. The issues facing the city are much larger and more complex than a typical city of our size. At as a core of a larger urban growth area, we are really a regional center and have close and complex relationships with Pierce County until the election stint gets up. Our beautiful shoreline location adds additional challenges and interactions with the state and regional organizations. Having a seasoned, well-trained professional manager managing the business of the city, with the council providing the policy and general budget guidance, seems to me to be the best way for the city to move forward and tackle the challenges facing us over the next decades. I recommend the council proceed in that direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that's dialed in or that would like to speak? Can you go down one more time? Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Council, City Administrator Bob Larson, would you read the comments that came in before 3:00?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is city administrator. There's a, there's three different comments that were submitted. And I'll read the two that are germane to this particular presentation, the topic first. From Lynn and Jamie Stevenson, 7604 Hill Avenue, Mayor Keenan and city council members regarding the consideration of a council manager form of government. Can I just test my microphone? Is everything, is it okay? I'm not, okay, want to make sure I'm not distorted or anything. Okay. If I just speak louder, just just put a thumbs up so I can adjust accordingly. We we believe this is an inappropriate time to be considering such a radical redesign of our city's infrastructure. Currently, every citizen is dealing with the consequences of the global COVID pandemic that is raging worse than ever. As a result, distributing information is more complicated, and it is impossible for citizens to congregate and have open, transparent discussions. We feel very strongly that a decision like this demands focused input from the public at large and request that you reschedule this discussion for a more appropriate time post-pandemic. Thank you. Sincerely, Lynn and Jamie Stevenson. The next one is from Matthew Rice, 9302 Goodman Drive. Dear Councilman Mayor, this is a comment relative to the presentation as viewed online at the city website concerning professional local government management, referencing slides from ICMA under Leaders at the Core of Better Communities, Political Leadership, and Professional Management. After reviewing and reflection on its content, but unsure of the council's or presenter's motives, or intent, I have the following comment. Be careful of what you wish for. Elected officials often serve with great sacrifice and with often with greater great criticism. Thank you all for serving. Elected is the key word. An elected mayor, a strong mayor, former government is a mayor responsive to the people, voters, and is still the best model for town and city government. Mayor may come with varying skills, and their election should depend at least partially upon their skills, but also upon how the community perceives the individual and also how the community can monitor the individual and their performance. The elected mayor's skills may need enhancement through education and training. How that is accomplished, I leave to the community. But the key is that the election cycle, the individuals voting decide who can be mayor, just as it decides who is on a city council. I favor a strong mayor approach to municipal governments. I distrust a weak mayor approach to local government. For a council to hire and fire an administrator slash manager can lead to acceptable government if the position is chosen wisely and fairly. But it can also lead to partisan politics, special interests served over the citizens' desires and interests, and has the potential to add costs, favor certain groups, and dilute the power of elections. A strong mayor allows for the balance of power. Set thresholds for for mayoral candidates, politic for best candidates, budget for appropriate training and assistance for new mayors, and work together to improve what is right for the citizens. A credential does not make a great mayor. Hard work, integrity, and a team working together makes a government that can be responsive to and accountable to the citizens. Thank you, Matthew Rice. Third submittal is from Mary Kozlowski, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name. She's at Heron's Key. Hello, my name is Mary Kozlowski, and I live at Heron's Key on Borgon Boulevard in Gig Harbor. I fully support the efforts of the Community Ad Hoc Committee to rename the Austin Eschery area next to the Harbor History Museum to Twol Walcut Park. This would belatedly honor the original residents of the Gig Harbor waterfront, the Squabopsh, a band of the Pialup tribe who live on this spot in a village called Twol Walcut. I also support the addition of the Austin name to the Donkey Creek Park area, i.e., the Austin Mill at Donkey Creek, to continue to honor one of the leading families in the logging industry which contributed to our heritage here in Gig Harbor. Thank you, Mary Kozlowski. Mayor, this concludes the comments that were submitted today.
Thank you. There is no old business, and so we'll start with our first item of new business, which is first read of ordinance. Updates to Title 15 Building and Construction. The report is from our building official, Paul Rice. Paul?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Every three years, the International Code Council updates their series of construction codes. These are then amended by the Washington State Building Code Council for state adoption. Every enforcing agency within the state must at a minimum adopt the state building code. Now, we've reviewed the state building code for consistency with Title 15 of the Gig Harbor Municipal Code. This ordinance before you adopts the state building code as required, as well as provides some minor housekeeping updates such as removing redundant language and revising code section numbers to align with the new codes. There's one item that I I'd like to clarify real quick. The the council bill states that following any questions that you may have, that we'll need to hold a public hearing. What actually all that's required is the opportunity for public comment, as stated in the agenda. It's a subtle difference, but it's important to note. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Paul. Clarifying questions from council. Councilmember Francis.
Yes, Paul, there there are no substantial changes that are going to limit whether or not somebody can put in a natural gas furnace or any such major items like that. This is strictly housekeeping, as you put it.
Correct. Yeah, we haven't, we haven't made any amendments that would add anything or detract from anything that is already adopted at the state level.
But the the state hasn't adopted anything in the last three years that is a major change?
The not 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 according to like, not necessarily as far as a furnace insulation. There are some changes that are coming under this this latest code cycle that affect our energy code requirements. That's been kind of the biggest, I don't know, hot topic, I guess, in the industry. Some of the insulation standards have gone up. Some of the requirements for efficiency for certain pieces of equipment will go into place. But those are the, those are the main main issues that we're having to deal with and the contractors will be dealing with on the construction side, so.
Can you tell me what appliance or efficiencies on appliances has changed?
Mainly the SEER rating for rooftop units, like a commercial HVAC units. It's it's rated on the SEER ratings is is an efficiency rating based on point system. We go, say, 13 to 16. There's just a couple of points difference that got bumped up this last code cycle. We don't have any say in that at the local level. All of the requirements, we we can adopt requirements that make the code more restrictive, but we can't make it less restrictive, unfortunately. I know that's a that's sometimes a something that we'd like to be able to do, but.
Well, I was just asking those questions just more for to to go have the, let the public know that. And I think it's important. I think we could be moving in a even more stringent manner when it comes to a lot of these things. And I think it could substantially add cost to projects. And at least from my personal opinion, I don't know if these incremental benefits that they say are coming from these are worth what our hard-working families have to spend on some of these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Himes.
Yeah, I just wanted to advise that this issue was in front of the Plan and Building Committee, and there was basically no issues that was agreed upon there. Relative to Councilmember Francis's issue with the incremental cost, particularly in the energy arena, and I can speak for automobiles, air conditioners, and a whole bunch of things. The power of the market kicks in shortly after these things go into effect, or in many cases, before they go into effect. And competitive forces bring those costs right back down. They don't last very long if there are any increases. That's the power of the free market system, and it works.
Thank you. Councilmember Markley.
Yes, thank you. So, Paul, the the language in the ordinance that had that's is struck through, is that to comply with the changes that the state has made? Or did staff decide on certain things to take out?
No, it's it's basically just for consistency. The only thing we actually took out, I believe, there was a a definition that is no longer referenced anywhere in our municipal code or in the state codes at all. And then there was a another section that we had in our municipal code about the hierarchy of the codes, where they stand, and that now is actually included in the state code. So we no longer needed it at at the local level.
So the section that was completely removed, the 15.0 or dot oh eight dot oh nine six, where it's talking about areas being designated as historic under an approved state or local preservation program. What is that? What does that change mean?
Excuse me, what page are you looking at?
I'm looking at page six of 10 in our agenda. At the very top, the very top of page six of 10, where it's struck out, it's, the title is Amendment to IBC Section 3409 dot two, exception three, where that whole section has been removed. I was just wondering what implications that has or what what that change means when that when that is removed.
Sure. What the what this, the building code does, there used to be a chapter in the International Building Code called Existing Structures and or Existing Construction. And that section has completely been removed from the building code completely. There's no longer a section 34 or a chapter 34. What the state's done is they have adopted an entire new code book called the Existing Building Code. And that is where all those provisions, and it's much more comprehensive now than it ever was just in one little chapter. There's an entire code book that references all the provisions of how to deal with the existing structures and existing buildings. And there's an entire chapter now on historic buildings. So it's been expanded greatly, and we just had this is sort of a, this was sort of an afterthought that's something that it's no longer required because there is no chapter to amend.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. We will have public comment now. Is there anyone, is there, are there any written comments that came in? Bob Larson?
Mayor, no, there were no written comments submitted for this particular agenda item.
Okay. Is anyone from the public wishing to comment? Please use your computer or your phone to let us know. Oh, that's true. Okay. Okay, I with that, I will close the public comment. Council deliberation time. Is there any council members that have questions on this or I'm sorry, comments on this? Okay, do I have a motion from a?
Mayor.
I'm sorry, we'll come back for a second reading. Thank you. With that, we'll go on to item two of new business, which is well number 3A reconstruction, Public Works Contract Award. And we're going to hear from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. As you know, the city's well number three that's located on the property between the Cushion Trail and the Public Storage Center up off Soundview Drive, that well was supposed to be rehabilitated in 2020. But due to some severe degradation of the well casing, the city staff looked at that along with the hydrogeologist and the consultant and the well driller, and the decision was made to abandon that old well casing and in place of installing a new casing. So the work you have before you tonight is the actual installation of that new well casing. This is a public works contract that provides for drilling a new 16-inch diameter well casing that's about 900, a little over 900 feet deep. The work will also include test pumping and decommissioning of the existing well. This project was bid using the city's public works bidding process. And the city did receive two bids. We opened bids on December 30th of last year. Bid results from each bidder are summarized in the council bill. And you, as you've seen, there's been, there were two bidders. Both bids were over budget by quite a bit, but the bids were with, were less than 1% apart from each other. So it was a tight bid. One likely reason this project is so costly and and so far over budget is because of the short timeframe that we have to to drill this well. And we gave the well driller a very short amount of time to complete all the necessary work, including the test pumping and decommissioning, so that we can get this well operational before the busy, high-water demands come in the summer. Staff still feels confident that we did receive a reasonable price on the bid due to the relative proximity of those two bids. And we are recommending that council award this contract to come up pump and drill, since it is such a critical piece of infrastructure. I, we did check with Dave Rodenbach, Finance Director, and sufficient funds. Uh, I, we did check with Dave Rodenbach, Finance Director, and sufficient funds do exist in the water operating budget to pay for this work. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, clarifying questions, uh, from council to Jeff? Okay. Uh, I don't see that there's any public comment written. I'm sorry, Councilmember Rodenberg. Uh, you're muted, Councilmember Roden.
Yes, um, I had a question. Since we seem to be paying a premium uh, to have this expedited or to have this doing, done within a certain timeframe, is there some kind of pinnacle, any penalty clause in the contract that would get us some kind of reimbursement if they don't meet that deadline or if they fail to perform?
Yes, there is a penalty clause in the contract. I don't have the number. Um, I could get that for you tomorrow. But, uh, there's, there's a penalty per day beyond the allotted number of working days uh, that the contractor would have to pay if they don't meet that deadline.
No, it's not necessary to give me the number. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, that's in there.
Okay, thank you. So now, as I, as I had said, I opened up the public comment. I don't believe there's any written comments at this time.
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this? Okay, I will close the public comment. And then it's time for council deliberation and action. Okay, I don't see any council deliberations. So with that, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve it as submitted.
Second.
Yes, I think you need to read the action plan, the proposed action plan of Councilmember Rodenberg.
I don't have that action plan in front of me, so I'll take back my, uh, offer to make the motion.
I'll be happy to read that.
Okay.
So I move to award and authorize the mayor to execute a public works contract with Tacoma Pump and Drilling Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed nine hundred forty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and sixty-five cents for well number three A reconstruction and authorize a city engineer to approve additionally expenditures up to seventy-five thousand dollars to cover any cost increases that may result from contract change orders.
Now, Councilmember, Councilmember Rodenberg, second that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Abstain? Okay, motion passes. Uh, council, if you can make sure that you do say aye, I would appreciate it, just so that we hear all of you.
Did we get a full vote on that? I didn't.
Uh, that's why I said no, and I said abstain. We, we got a full vote of seven, zero, but I only, thank you. Yeah, again, it's important for everyone to say aye, and I still will go through the rest. Motion passes seven, zero. With that, we'll move to new business, item three, which is Resolution eleven ninety-six Quarterly Budget Objective Update Policy. The report is Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. So for some time now, I think that council has been interested in having a quarterly budget report, and, and that's basically, it's a policy that sets this as a quarterly budget report. It will come to the council on, uh, every quarter, and it starts off with a written report. Their object is to be a very brief report on items in the budget. And then if any other items need to be discussed, we can discuss them longer. But this is not to make an undue burden upon any of our city staff, but that it is very brief. And for example, it can say, uh, this project is due to start in next month or next quarter, or this budget item is thirty percent done, um, or this budget item is completed, or this budget item is not going to be handled in the year twenty twenty-one. So that's pretty much, it's simple, and it just allows the council to have a quarterly update on every budget item. Any questions?
Okay, no clarifying questions from council. And then, uh, public comment, are there any public comment, written public comments on this, Bob?
Uh, both are not, Mayor.
Okay, I will open, I will, uh, see if there's anyone from the public that's, uh, signed in that would like to speak on this. Okay, I'm allowing time in case someone has trouble signing in. And, uh, then I will close the public comment. Uh, time for council deliberation. Councilmember Franch.
Yeah, I, I, I like this ordinance or this resolution, excuse me. Um, I, I hope that it's a little more involved than Councilmember Wook just mentioned. I, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction with this type of report and the, um, project timeline schedule that will be seen from Mr. Langham in the future on where these are capital projects are, as we work our way through the year. So I think this is a, a, a good step. And I, I think it, um, it will lead to less surprises later on in, in the year as things progress. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Himes.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I would just like to remind council that we basically passed as a condition of the budget with the authorization of two full-time equivalent heads increase in the public works arena, that this type of review was required quarterly with the whole council. But the big one in there was that the uh, that it basically, it requires a, a brief capital project timing status update quarterly, which is what this does, with monthly public works committee review and possible mitigation recommendations to council on any capital project in serious jeopardy of missing, missing two thousand twenty-one year-end objectives. And the reason for that is ninety days is a heck of a long time when you've only got three hundred and sixty to deal with. Uh, basically, you've got to respond, if there's a problem, you've got to know it fast, and there has to be a disposition on it. Uh, do we keep going? Do we throw money at it? Do we reprioritize it so we put more heads against it? What do we do? Or do we just say, hey, it's not in the cards for this year. That typically has got to happen fast. If you wait on just a pure quarterly basis to find out you're in trouble, uh, you, you, you're, you're basically dead before you even see it. You, you don't get a chance to react, okay? So what I would suggest is, um, adding that kind of language to the proposed amendment that Councilmember Wook, Wook is putting forth here. That is, I think there has to be a provision in there that if something is going awry, uh, we need to know about it pretty doggone fast. In this case, on public works, it would go to the public, the public works committee, okay, to review it and understand it and come back to council with, hey, here's the problem, here's the alternatives we got, okay, and what do you think? So I would strongly recommend that.
Councilmember Markley.
Um, yes, thank you. Uh, so to Councilmember Himes' point, I think with the weekly updates that we get, um, would, would that, I think that would take care of any pressing things that staff would want us to know. So maybe that, um, I think this is a great compliment to the weekly digest that we receive. I, I know that I really appreciate the weekly digest or bi-weekly digest that we get from, uh, City Minister Larson and the staff. Um, and I think staff has been really good about bringing things to our attention when there's something that's come up. If there needs to be language in there, then it, to make that better for some, then, I mean, I don't have any objection to that, but I think staff's doing a really good job with keeping council informed on projects. I, I do like this quarterly, uh, report idea, though. I think it's a great idea. So I'll, I'll be supporting this.
Yes, uh, City Minister Bob Larson?
If I can just make a comment on those, those last two from Councilmember Himes and Councilmember Markley. We, uh, I'll ask Jeff to, uh, just to, if, if necessary, to supplement my comment, but we also have, I think it's called the Public Outreach Document. We're right by, we have all of the capital projects listed, and, uh, staff goes through those every other week immediately following the council meeting. We keep that up to date. We have been providing a copy of that now more recently to council. I think we started in late twenty twenty. So that should be a supplemental document as well, that we track literally all the steps we're taking, the step, the dates we took those steps and where we're at in the progress reports, where we're at on the actual budgeting. I'll ask Jeff if I'm missing anything. I want to make sure we're clear about that, because I think that, that is an excellent document as well.
Well, just, just one item, that Public Outreach Document is the, uh, are the active projects that Public Works is working on. If there's a project that has not yet been started or we're not ready to engage with the public, that, that, uh, those projects are often not listed in the Public Outreach Document.
Uh, but there is a, another document that you have that lists what's going ahead. The construction, the design, all the different time elements in that, that without admitting this, we could share that with council, correct?
Yes, yes, that, that's our Microsoft project schedule of all of our projects that are in the twenty, i- in each year's budget. We have those allocated for design permitting, ad, award, construction type allocation, but it's very detailed. And if you're not used to looking at MS project schedules, it can be overwhelming.
Is Jeff, is there a chance that we could perhaps just create a summary from that particular document to supplement the other one I referred to, as well as the quarterly report?
Uh, we could have a summary, um, though, once you start to pull apart, um, the timelines, what part of the project is actually underway, whether that's design or permitting or what have you, consultant selection, um, a, a lot of that useful, what if you, if you collapse all that information, a lot of that useful information goes away.
Thank you.
We, we could, we could look at, uh, providing something that's a little less detailed than what we have today.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And maybe Councilmember Himes, that might be sufficient, but we'll find out. Councilmember Wook.
Yes, I move to approve Resolution eleven ninety-six.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain?
And, and by the way, uh, does this supersede the motion that this council approved less than a month ago?
No, I, this is City Minister Larson. I, I think it only adds to it or supplements that. We, we'll do that in addition to, yes.
Okay, okay. I'm gonna make sure of that, because the, like I say, the, 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 the committee review is in that document that we approved in December.
I think the important element here, this is City Minister Larson again, from Mayor and Council, is that we will put together enough information, I believe, and we'll check in with council to ensure that you're satisfied with the reporting that you'd like to see, and we'll, we'll include that as necessary.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I, I just want to make sure that we're, we, we're in understanding that. I, I should have mentioned, I failed to mention that a, a lot of this, by the way, is, is time for council to react and do something, okay? Uh, a lot of these things that, the, the decision may be made by the clock, otherwise, if we don't watch out, okay? The, reporting is one thing, trying to react and fix is another thing, okay? And they all take time. So I'll stop right there.
Okay, with, with what, with, uh, what Bob Larson said, do you still want abstained, or do you want to support it?
Uh, I, I'll wait and see what it looks like when I get it.
Thank you. Okay, that's six yeses and one abstain. Okay? And with all that, we're going to go to staff report. Uh, there is one item of our staff report, our Tourism and Communication Director, Laura Pettit.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, just a quick update on, uh, one project that was, uh, pending. You'd made a recommendation that five thousand dollars, uh, come out of that LTAC budget to support an arts commission uh, catalog of public artworks. So we wanted to just let you know that, uh, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee is in support. Um, and they had two side comments as well. They wanted to, A, make sure that, um, there were not just city-owned pieces of artwork that were included in that. Um, and then also that, uh, the recommendation was that they go just outside city limits as well to include public art that is, uh, just outside of our appropriate limits, um, some short drives. There's got to be a limit on that as, as the mayor and I have, have talked about, but, um, but those are those two comments that, that we wanted to pass on from LTAC.
Great, thank you. And with that, we're going to go to council reports and comments. Uh, first, we have the Finance and Safety Committee, uh, December twenty-first. With that reporting, we're going to have Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, we had the Finance and Safety Committee meeting December twenty-first. All council people, uh, attended. We had a presentation by Human Resource Director Camille Borders, and we talked about, uh, the five reportable OSHA injuries we had, uh, in twenty twenty. Interestingly, uh, three of them were a loss of hearing. So we discussed, uh, audiology testing, uh, what the city does. And we were all satisfied that the city seems to be doing, uh, what they can in that regard. We also spoke about, uh, we addressed the, on the employee engagement survey, there was quite a few comments about the city's response to COVID. Uh, some of the comments were that it was disorganized, uh, not quick enough. Uh, some departments had to find their own PPE. Uh, but I think we came to the conclusion that even though that was the case, uh, this is a, uh, instance where no one had any experience in it. And so the city moved as quickly as they could, uh, and tried to do the best they could. And if they've stumbled, uh, I think everybody facing the same thing, uh, had stumbled themselves. So, uh, we concluded that the city was in no no fault as far as COVID response. So that being said, we adjourned the meeting, and that was it.
Thank you. We had a Planning and Building Committee on January fourth. Councilmember Himes.
Yes, uh, the committee met on the fourth, and we went over three major topics. Uh, one of them was the two thousand twenty-one annexation feasibility study, and that is, uh, in the UGA area. Uh, second item was the buildable lands report update, which basically, uh, quantifies uh, what we've got available in terms of buildable lands. And the third item was the growth allocation process. Uh, you've heard about Vision two thousand fifty under the Puget Sound Regional Conference. There's council, I should say, there's another one coming under the State, uh, uh, Growth Management Act. Uh, and as I understand it, uh, from, uh, uh, our director, that this is possibly different than what Vision two thousand fifty is right now. Um, the key that came out of that is these three items are all interrelated, okay? The annexation feasibility study, the buildable lands report, and the growth allocation process. They support the growth allocation process, particularly our response. Uh, and the most immediate need is to kick off the two thousand twenty-one annexation feasibility study right now. That will be done by an outside consultant. We really need to go on that. So, um, that's it from the Planning and Building Committee.
Thank you. And then we had the Parks Commission, January sixth. Councilmember Albersold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just had a, a kind of a brief meeting. We, uh, uh, the mayor and Jennifer Keating, uh, as members of the Ad hoc Committee, gave us an update on restoring a park name. Uh, and we had to, um, I believe, move the actual presentation that we were going to, uh, have that evening to a later time because some changes had come up. Uh, we also reviewed, uh, the two thousand twenty-one Parks Commission Work Plan. Uh, Jeff Langham, our Public Court Director, uh, gave us a review of that and covered those topics. Uh, we also heard from, uh, Director Langham about, uh, his ideas as far as the process and the timing uh, for hiring a new parks manager. And, uh, then we also discussed, uh, subcommittees and how, uh, we might break up into subcommittees to take a look at different things within the parks. Uh, so that concludes that meeting. It was kind of brief. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, uh, Public Affairs Director Jeff Langham, have we posted the changes, uh, for the public outreach to the public yet? Public Affairs Director Jeff Langham, have we posted the changes, uh, for the public outreach to the public yet on the changes for the, um, the restoring the name, how we were going to keep, we were recommending keeping Austin, Austin Park, but have we posted those changes yet on that Rita board at the site?
No, we have not. I'm waiting for the final language revisions from, uh, Louise Teeman.
From who?
Louise Teeman.
Okay, I have, Robin had sent those to myself, which I actually sent on to the whole Ad-Hoc Committee. So you should have, you should have that.
Okay, okay.
And that had already been approved, uh, by Robin and, um, the committee. They actually, they were going to, they were going to, if they wanted changes, they were going to do that by noon today. And that's already been approved by the tribe. So do you have those changes that I forwarded last week?
Yes, I do. Yeah.
Okay. All right. So in the next, sometime this week, will you be able to make sure that the newspaper as well as the Rita Board says all that?
Uh, yes, we will, uh, it'll take at least a week to get that new board up, but yes, we'll get that new board up with that new language.
Okay. Can the board be, I was hoping the board could just be changed. The lettering could be changed.
We don't have the ability to print on that. Um, I would have to have it repainted over and then stenciled on.
Okay. Yeah. Do what's appropriate, but as long as we get the, so the public, uh, knows those changes as soon as possible. And then I would, uh, maybe, uh, e- email the, uh, the restoring the name when, when that is out there, just so we know it's been done.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Inter-Governmental Affairs Committee was January 6th. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Councilmembers Rodenberg and Markley and I had a really productive conversation with Representative Caldera. She was unable to join us, um, I guess a month or so ago when we met with our other two legislative members of our delegation. Um, Representative Caldera expressed very, very strong support for our transportation requests related to congestion on, um, Highway 16 and, and obviously the city parts of that. So that was really great. She also said that she would advocate and really keep an eye on our RCO grant applications, um, which are looking good for the sports complex, but she's going to keep an eye on that for us as well, which is wonderful. And then we spoke with our lobbyists about the session in general, how things were going to work. And we assured them that if there were things coming up that, that the city would like to weigh in on, that they would reach out to, um, City Administrator Bob Larson and the mayor, and that council members, you know, could have an opportunity to testify. They, um, they spoke about how, how powerful it was when council members spoke, you know? Staff is wonderful, but having, you know, elected officials from our, from our public speak is really powerful. So if there's things of interest to you all, um, you're passionate about and are knowledgeable about, you know? I, I know that City Administrator Larson or the mayor will be reaching out to, to different folks to testify as things come up. Thank you.
Thank you. And then standing committee discussion. Uh, I've heard from some council members that they were happy where they were and they wanted another year in the committee that they're on. But if there's, um, so that's why I'm just bringing this up, but if there's one council member that wants to maybe change what they're on, then we need to follow through with what we have. So we, you know, we change our committees every year and, um, it goes by seniority as we've talked about, and that's fine. I just want to make, if, if no one wants to change, then we don't have to do that all over again. But if one member, one council member wants one of their changes at all, then we need to follow through with, uh, with our, uh, is it a resolution or is it a, uh?
I believe it's a selection process.
Yeah, but was it a resolution or was it an ordinance?
That I would refer to our city clerk. I don't know if it's either one of those.
Okay. Anyway, okay. I just want to make sure. So Councilmember Albert Sold.
Yes, I'm happy with my committees. I'd like to stay on.
Okay. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yeah, I, I wasn't asked, but I, uh, I'm happy with the committees I'm on, so I support that.
Okay. Uh, this might save time. Councilmember Markley.
Um, yes, I am happy with the committees I'm on, and I feel that we haven't been on our committees long enough to do a whole switcheroo yet. So it would be kind of, I think for continuity and just the way that the year has gone, I think it'd be great to stay where we are if possible.
Thank you. So I'd like to hear from the other three or anyone that has not spoken.
Uh, yeah, I'm satisfied with where I'm at.
Okay.
I'm happy with where I'm at.
Okay.
I'm happy with where I'm at.
Okay. Councilmember Denson.
I'm at the bottom of the totem pole, so it probably doesn't matter, but I'm totally fine.
Okay. All right. Well, that saved Josh Stecker some time. So, uh, so I just thought I'd give that a try and it, it, you know, that's, uh, that's good. So we're, and I, I agree with the count, the comment that Councilmember Markley said. With, with COVID, you know, we, it's been a kind of rough, you know, start in getting used to your committee. So, uh, we will stay on the same committees for another year with the okay by council. And then, um, other council reports, comments. Councilmember Wu.
Yes, thank you. Um, so since 2018, three years' time, the city is on our third city administrator. Forty-five of our employees have left working for the city. Some of those have retired. We will never know who would have stayed beyond retirement age. Another 33% of our employees have said in an employee survey, they are planning to leave the city within two to three years. We've spent hundreds of thousands of our citizens' tax dollars have been spent on new employees, getting them settled. Since 1990, every new Washington state city has been formed under the council manager form of government. So this evening I'm making a request, and to be clear, the request I am making does not vote on the form of government. It brings forward a resolution to put it on the ballot for our citizens to vote on. So I request to have a resolution brought forth at the next council meeting that will place a change to council manager form of government on the special election, uh, on April 27th.
I don't know if you need a second, but I support that.
Okay. There's a second, uh, council discussion. Councilmember Markley.
Uh, Mayor, those were, I believe, from, uh, previous.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't, I, I did not, uh, mean to have my hand raised there.
Molly can take those down. Those were from the previous discussion.
Sorry about that.
A lot of hands from the previous discussion.
Mayor, if I could just make a point of order, this is City Administrator Larson. Is this the appropriate time to, uh, have a motion and a second on this? Or should that request, because councilors can request to have items put on the agenda if you'd be brought to back to, brought back to the next council meeting as an agenda bill for consideration?
So I am requesting, I am requesting that this is brought back. If this is a problem, we have a parliamentarian, I believe. And let's, uh, let's ask Mr. Stecker, our parliamentarian, if this is the appropriate time to make this request.
It's certainly the most appropriate time to make the request. You can put this on the agenda for next time. Any councilor may do that as an agenda bill. That, that was my comment. I think there was a, a second to your motion. It made it appear as though there would be a vote on it tonight.
So I did not make a motion. I'm requesting this, this resolution come back. Does it have to be a motion?
No, it does not. You can request it, have it on as an agenda bill at the next meeting.
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
Uh, Daniel, I, I'm trying to, didn't we say that there had to be at least three supporting, uh, something to, I can't remember.
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll speak to this and then of course Josh, if you want to, uh, chime in as well. So I believe there's actually two provisions that apply to this. Any council member may add an item to an, uh, an agenda, so that can happen. Under section 12 of your, uh, adopted rules of procedure, which is the council reports section, it says that this, this portion of the meeting is the time for council members to introduce new items for consideration. And then goes on to say council members may bring up suggestions and ideas. And with, uh, and with majority of council concurrence, may direct the mayor to direct staff to analyze and prepare a brief report on the issue. The difference that I see is the difference between simply having something added to an agenda, which one person can do, and then using staff time, for example, to prepare a resolution, which would be, uh, under this report. Josh, do you concur with that?
Yeah, I believe that was the intent of the, this section of the council guidelines is that if council wanted an actual resolution brought forward, this would be the appropriate time for them to express concurrence to have someone from staff prepare that.
So a majority concurrence, uh, allows staff to spend time on what would otherwise be added to the agenda with just one person? And again, as Councilmember Wu said, this is not a vote on the content of that at all.
Right. So this means the council can discuss this and then, uh, vote with the majority in order for us to spend staff time to bring it back as a resolution. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, then we're going to open up for council comments first. Councilmember Franch.
Yes. Well, I was, uh, forwarded an email that apparently Councilmember Wu had sent out. I don't know how, what the list was, where it went out, if it was to the general public, if it was to specific, uh, community members, but, um, I, I saw a, a lot of misinformation in it. Um, we have not had three city administrators. We've had two city administrators, one interim city administrator. And I was very confused when she talked about hundreds and hundreds, in, in, in implying this to the public is where I see the problem. Hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent on new employees. I, 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 I don't know. She doesn't have to clarify, if she doesn't want to, what her intent was with that. But that really doesn't amount, if she's, I, I personally believe Councilmember Wu has been, um, looking to bring this notion forward for quite some time. And if she's trying to, uh, sell this to the community, I think that it's, uh, incumbent upon her to have correct facts that she's using when she's trying to sell this idea to the community. So, um, the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent. Uh, I, I don't know whether that's true or not. I don't know what, what bearing that would have on, um, whether or not, what form of government we should have. Um, will over 70% of the cities of our size are a strong mayor of government. I think she quotes 60% in her, uh, publication. And the, you know, what seems to be coming up a lot in this discussion from Mr. Wilson and, and, um, the previous discussion about this is professional management experience. And that somehow we, if we have a city and manager, that that is going to bring some sort of extra management experience that a mayor may not have. When in fact, that is why we hire a city administrator. The mayor appoint or nominates a city administrator that the council approves. That is supposed to, i- if we all do our homework and, um, we all, uh, the majority of the council votes to hire that city administrator, then I would think that we had all done our homework, that we make sure that we feel that that particular person has the management experience to, uh, run the city efficiently. And the, 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 the most critical thing to me, and I, I think to anybody that's listening to this and, um, hopefully it will be expounded upon in the future is that, well, first of all, I guess the number one thing on my first page here is that in Councilmember Wu's, um, publication, she stated that every four years, a new mayor in a council is voted in. That, that is totally wrong. There is not a new council voted in every four years. There are staggered terms. Every four years, on one cycle, there's four council members. The next cycle, there are three council members. So there, in no way is there a new council voted on every set, every four years. And that is critical to the whole notion of a city manager form of government when it takes four council people have complete control over who that city manager is. That takes all of the representation for the citizens out of the picture until a, a minimum of seven years, i- i- it's the soonest, a- and then by then, it's, it's almost, uh, too late for that to happen because i- i- it's just, uh, it, it, there's a lot of misinformation that was in that newsletter. And the, the, the thing that I find other than that the mayor has a, um, I believe in most cases, a mayor has a more community, um, involvement than a city manager would have. I think that's very important. But the number one thing is that every four years, if the citizens do not like the direction that the city is going, that the mayor is taking the city on, the citizens have the ability to vote that mayor out. Under a city manager form of government, that power is taken away from the citizens, and I find that very troubling. So, uh, I know we're not voting on this next week, but I hope that, um, the council thinks about this very carefully. When we do have to take a vote on this in two weeks, um, about doing the best job we can to let the citizens participate in their government.
Thank you. Well, we actually will be taking a vote on this tonight with, with needing four council members to support this.
Well, clearly, I mean, to, we're not taking a vote, whether to, to put this on the ballot, we're put, we may be taking a vote on whether or not we're going to devote staff time to it.
That's correct. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am supportive of adding this item to the agenda because we've had two educational sessions so far on the topic, and as we weigh the pros and cons, I'd like to hear what the public has to say. This is a really big decision and the governance of the city has, has big impacts on our public. So by putting the resolution on the agenda, the council here has an opportunity to have a full and transparent, open discussion about the two methods of government. Um, for example, just as Councilmember Franch was saying, we can all weigh in with which, which form of government we think is best and why, and there are certainly pros and cons to both. And we will also welcome the public's input. We had great comments tonight from four different residents in our community, but most members of the public aren't going to know to speak up or write in or even think about doing so unless it shows up on the agenda. So with it being an agenda item next time, we can have a full conversation. We can, you know, talk back and forth about pros and cons, and we can listen to the opinions of the public so that we can move forward making the best decision we can, um, prior to, and if, and if that decision is to move forward with a different form of government, then of course the public has the ultimate say on that as well. So I will be supporting this resolution on the agenda.
Okay. I, my personal opinion is this is not transparent during a crisis. And, uh, 17% of cities have changed their form of government in the last 50 years. That's not very many. So trying to do this when council cannot ev, when, uh, citizens cannot even come in and you're, they're relying on a Zoom meeting, I don't think is transparent at all. And it gives the quality of transparency that this council has really talked about. But that's my opinion. Councilmember Heinz.
Uh, yeah, um, we just had the second exposure to this topic tonight. Um, and I had a lot of questions coming out of the last one. Uh, the big issue being, uh, essentially from the MRSC uh, discussion, or let's say presentation, that they couldn't recommend one over the, one form over the other. Back to, I think the punchline was you can make mobile work. They both work. There's excellent examples out there going both ways. So I think this boils down to, uh, one, we, we, we need to fully understand the, the, the consequences of what we're doing. And by the way, don't let the current situation dictate the future of Gig Harbor and then regret it. Okay? This thing could flip back the other way.
Harbor and then regret it. Okay, this thing could flip back the other way, okay, in, in the next four years, okay? And we would, we would look even dumber, saying, well, let's go back to where we were. It was great then. That's the first issue. Second issue, we just had a discussion about FTEs and hard time containing things and everything else, and then we want to tear anything up and throw it up in the air and redo it this year. I'm sorry, but as an ex-executive before a voter company, I'd shoot the first guy that came in with that suggestion, calling, what are you guys thinking? We need to have a detailed discussion on this, not only on the, the proposal, but on the proposed timing of this proposal. This is, this is warp speed, okay? I don't know if we can do it. I don't know if the community can simulate it. I'm not sure we can get the message out one way or another to even have an intelligent discussion around this by April. You got to be kidding me. You can't do it. I'll bet against you right now. You cannot do it. And I will not agree to authorize any incremental expenditures by staff to go do this crazy thing, to speed it up to make it happen. So where I'm at, I haven't voted one way or the other, but to basically call what in sports is called a quick whistle, to try to get something through immediately, as fast as you possibly can, without much thought. I am dead set against this thing, and I would recommend that we start with a discussion in the extra hour that our city administrator found in our council retreat schedule, to go through this thing in great detail. And by the way, I'd like to see what's required. When you talk about staff, what's required? Is it two heads? Is it five heads? Is it three heads? What's the timing of that? How fast do you have to go? How do you adapt? That's another great one. Do we shut down the existing form of government? I think we had sixty days was the last time, last number I heard. You got sixty days from the date of the election to go that way. Okay? Are we prepared to basically start over with a whole new administration, a whole new scheme, okay, this year, with all the items that we got on the burner, where we're trying to do one and a half years, years worth of work in one year because of 2020 and COVID? Are we prepared to do that? I haven't heard answers to any of those questions. This is absurd. So I will stop right there, but if we go with this, this is crazy. This is absolutely crazy. I'll stop.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Thank you.
You're on mute.
I don't think that we should underestimate the public's ability to assimilate this, and the sixty days is from the election, should it be in November, not if it's in April. And as far as being transparent, I think that just by evidence tonight, this was only a presentation. However, we did get four people from the community to get involved. So the fact that saying that they, the public can't get involved, I think is a misnomer. They absolutely did tonight, and once it's an agenda item, I'm sure they will absolutely get involved then as well. So I do support it.
So I also might let council realize, when we asked MRSC last week, how much it would cost to make the change, how many hundreds of staff hours it would take to change the ordinances, the codes, the code book, and all the regulations that we've had for, I don't know, a hundred and fifty years, they did not know. They had no idea how much it costs, or how much staff hour. All they could say is it's, it's a lot, and we will have to get back to you. So my, my point is, MRSC, that governs cities, they didn't even have an answer of how much it's going to cost, or what it entails, and you want, you want staff to come back, basically with it, with a council, with a resolution, in less than two weeks, with all that information, that even, even our MRSC doesn't even have. So just weigh that in. Councilmember Franch. You're on mute.
I agree with a lot of things Councilmember Heinz had to say. And, you know, furthermore, I'll just go back to, this is just another in the line of politically motivated item that is, is poisonous for our community, and for this council to even entertain this is, is, it's beyond me, and I'm, I'm just, it's very disappointing. I mean, if this had come from a grassroots level, I would support it, but it, it is not. It has come from a few select council people that aren't happy with the mayor. So let's just call it what it is.
Councilmember Markley.
Yes, thank you. So I have thought long and hard about this subject. My gut feeling is that this isn't just, this is not a good time to do this. This is not a good time for our community. I think we are going through quite enough as a city, as it is, quite enough as a nation. I think we need some stability, and I, I think that this is an emotional reaction to the survey results, and kind of a knee-jerk reaction. As much as I would love to hear what the public has to say, I think this would overwhelm them, to be honest. And it's overwhelming for me to even think about, you know, I've, I've read through all of the documentation of what it would take to switch to this form of government, the pros, the cons. You know, yes, there, there are some pros, but I, I see more cons right now at this time where we are. I think, I think that we need a little bit more time under our belt with four new council people coming in this year, or next year, but being elected in 2021. There will be four new council people elected, and a new mayor elected, or potentially our sitting mayor reelected. And I just, I don't think that this is the right time. This is, I don't think this is the right ballot for this to be on. I, I just, I echo Councilmember Franch and Councilmember Heinz in, in most of what they said. I just, I, I, and this is, this is hard, because I really do want to know what the public has to say, and I care about our staff, and I care about what they want and what they feel that they need. I care very much about all of that. And just in my gut, I just feel like this is the wrong time. I feel like we, this is going to come back and bite us to try to do this right now. So I'm not supportive. I wish I could be, but I'm just, I'm not. And I've, I've just, I've thought, I've prayed, I've studied, I've, I just can't support it right now.
Councilmember Abersold.
Am I muted?
No.
Okay, good. I echoed Councilmember Markley's comments, although I would say that we don't know if we're going to have four new council members. We might have the same four. Who's the same?
Thank you. With that, let's, let's see where we fall. So there's a, a resolution for a special, a resolution to come back at, the resolution is to come back to be on the next council agenda for a special election on, in April. And we have a second. I'll do a, I'll do a call, a roll call. Councilmember Markley.
No.
Councilmember Franch.
No.
Councilmember Woo. Councilmember Jensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Heinz.
No.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Abersold.
A tiebreaker here?
No.
Yes.
Oh, me.
Nope, okay. It's not on the, it's not on the agenda. It, four no's, three yeses. Other council member comments during this time?
Yes, I just wanted to thank all of our Washington State legislators for what they're about to go through for this upcoming legislative session. They have a lot of challenges ahead of them, being virtual, not having the ability to present as many bills as usual, security issues that are already known, that they're already being planned for. So I just wanted to let them know, not just our district, but all of our senators and legislators around the state, that my thoughts and prayers are with them during this time, during this session, during this crazy time. A lot of them have actually reached out for prayers and good thoughts, because the National Guard is currently surrounding our Capitol Building right now in preparation for possible mischief. So I'm hoping that that doesn't happen, but grateful for the people that are there to protect, and grateful for our legislation that is there to serve and try to make this happen in such a strange year. So just wanted to thank them and commend them for the hard work that they're going to be doing over the next hundred and five days.
Thank you. I'm sure we all echo that. Thank you very much, Councilmember Markley. Okay, I don't see any other council comments. So we have announcement of other meetings. The Public Works Committee is Tuesday, January twelfth, at eleven, at three PM, that's tomorrow. City Council Study Session is Thursday, January fourteenth, at three PM. We have Martin Luther King Junior Day, is the city offices will be closed, January eighteenth. The Boards and Commission Candidate Review Committee is Tuesday, January nineteenth, at three PM. The Intergovernmental Affairs Committee is Monday, January twenty-fifth, at four PM. And the mayor and council, the mayor, the city administrator and council retreat is Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, from eight-thirty AM till four-thirty PM. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.